For parts of the CSRA, we're going to talk about that and rain chances that look like they're increasing. Details coming up.
I just don't think that it is reasonable to put a hotel in Aplin.
Now at 10, residents concerned about new neighborhoods and new hotels. Tonight, they take those concerns to county leaders. And Augusta city leaders will soon discuss whether to pass a nondiscrimination ordinance. We'll have a preview up ahead. Also tonight, the Georgia Department of Juvenile Justice is looking to hire a lot of people. We'll have those details and those jobs. That and so much more as your news at 10 starts now.
Live from Television Park, this is WJBF News Channel 6 at 10 on MeTV.
Thanks so much for joining us tonight. I'm Dernissa Jefferson. Coverage you can count on begins tonight in Columbia County where planning commissioners are making a decision on whether a new hotel will be coming to Aplin.
I just don't think that it is reasonable to put a hotel in Aplin.
Dozens of people showed up to a Columbia County planning meeting Thursday night to voice their concerns about a proposed rezoning plan that would bring a hotel and a gas station to Aplin.
I'm hoping that enough voices are heard that they decide not to rezone.
Many Aplin residents not in favor of the proposed plan.
And I just don't feel that we need this kind of commercialism in our little community.
A line of residents showed up Thursday night to let the planning commission know exactly how they felt.
Everyone has the right to voice their own opinion. And as you can see, the crowd that we have, there are many, many people in Aplin who feel the same way.
Mary Ann McCall has lived in Aplin for 25 years. She says she wants to keep the close-knit community she's grown to love.
It's neighbors taking care of neighbors. And you know, with all the growth, that's going to disappear. And so it's really wonderful to be able to count on those that live near you.
Their voices were heard as the planning commission voted against rezoning the parcel in Aplin.
All in favor of disapproval? Motion to disprove carries five zero.
The planning commission also discussed rezoning an area on Owens Road. It would turn a 34-acre parcel on 4315 and 4299 Owens Road into a residential subdivision. A decision on that motion was postponed until December 2nd.
Here we are. Welcome back.
Yes, and the weather was really chilly today. I know I was pretty cold. So how are you feeling, Tim?
Just as cold. And the sky didn't help because it was cloudy and sort of wintery. Yeah. In fact, proof of the pudding here, let's look at our almanac for today, Dernissa. And here it is, 57 the high. Probably felt like 47. Yeah, I'm with you on that. Started out at 48 degrees. We should be at 73 and 45 and not going to see that for a while. Still dealing with some clowns around the CSRA tonight. Two state views pretty much showing the same, but we're starting to see a little bit of clearing, a little bit. And that's going to allow for the temperatures to fall a little bit as the wedge, well, actually, I think, starting to break here a little bit. So we'll start to lose those clouds. Notice, goodness, already 42 in Saluda, 49 though at Bushfield. So certainly is cooler towards the north. And that's why I think we're going to have a little bit of a frosty morning for some places. Notice the winds, well, they're starting to calm down a little bit, but they are from the north around nine to 10 miles per hour. Low temperatures tonight, 36 Saluda. You all may see a 34 in there. Not expecting to freeze, but certainly some frost, 40 from Augusta and towards the south. And hence, there's our frost advisory in effect until 9 o'clock for Saluda County. We have a changing forecast coming our way. The rain chances actually may be going up tomorrow late into Saturday. We'll talk more about that in detail coming up in just a bit.
All right, thanks so much, Tim. Work is wrapping up on Augusta's proposed budget. Commissioners say they'll be ready to approve it on November 16 despite some lingering issues. The plan for next year does not include the canal authority's $475,000 request. It's for maintenance of the historic area. City leaders say they will address the request at its first meeting after the budget is approved.
There seemed to be a consensus among the commissioners that were here that they were going to approve it and they would just do it before the end of the year when the budget actually goes into effect. So based on that, I'm obviously very happy, but we'll wait to see.
You would rather have it in the budget?
Rather have it in the budget that they're going to approve.
Commissioners say they'll also take up requests after the budget is approved for the Augusta Boxing Club and the library. Augusta's nondiscrimination ordinance is getting some attention. Here's News Channel 6's Ashley Jones.
I believe that I have support.
Super District 9 Commissioner Francine Scott is confident that the nondiscrimination ordinance will get its approval on November 9.
We're just trying to protect everyone in the city. If you live here, play here, come here for an event, we don't want anyone to feel like that Augusta can discriminate.
The ordinance was first drafted back in 2019, and since then, it's been sitting in work session for months.
It needed some tweaking, and we worked, we formed a work group composed of some of my colleagues, some business people, community stakeholders.
But now it's finally moving forward to its final stages. While the ordinance protects anyone in the city from discrimination, Matthew Duncan, President of Augusta Equality, says it'll primarily serve employees and employers.
Employees from discriminatory behavior and employers from frivolous accusations of discriminatory behavior.
Employees who feel like they've been a victim of discrimination from an employer can take their complaints to the city compliance department for investigation. It could then go to a mediator or even court.
Instead of it being litigated in the court of public opinion, on Twitter, or you know, social media, or anything like that, it can be handled in a fair process. It gives both sides the opportunity to discuss the issue with each other and with the hearing officer.
The ordinance has already been adopted by other cities in Georgia like Atlanta, Savannah, and Statesboro. People who want to file a complaint will have to pay a $50 filing fee. If approved on November 9, the ordinance will head to the full county commission for a vote. In Augusta, I'm Ashley Jones, WJBF News Channel 6.
A new arena for Augusta may be down, but some say it's not out. Tuesday, voters rejected raising property taxes to pay for the new arena. That's stopped progress on the new facility in its tracks. We asked city leaders if they're concerned about Columbia County now taking on building a new large entertainment facility for the area.
I see it being built in Richmond County. I don't care what Columbia County does. We're going to do what we need to do here in Augusta for our people.
Mayor Protemp wants to see new funding package for the arena as soon as possible so it could be put back before voters by next summer. The Department of Juvenile Justice held a job fair in Augusta today. News Channel 6's Mary Hawkins has that story.
Behind gates like these across the country, there's a critical need for juvenile correctional officers.
So yes, there's a need, and we're hiring.
That need is also felt in Augusta.
Because of the impact that COVID has had on us, there is a need for a lot of our positions. And so we are an employer of choice, and we look forward to bringing on some wonderful people in the Augusta area.
At the Augusta Youth Development Campus, many attended the job fair, resumes in hand, hoping to land the job that pays just over $30,000.
We are doing onsite interviews, and hopefully, we would like to make contingent offers to the people in the Augusta area.
The training program is five weeks long. For retired military with honorable discharge, the Department of Juvenile Justice is offering a 10% salary incentive.
And we are hiring for various positions. We have juvenile correctional officers. We're hiring for food service workers, housekeeping.
If you weren't able to make it out to the job fair, but you're interested in a career in the Department of Juvenile Justice, I'll have more information in this story on our website. In Augusta, Mary Hawkins, WJBF News Channel 6.
Tomorrow, Colin Cody will take us through the festivities and parade celebration of the Atlanta Braves World Series title. The drought ended on Tuesday after the Braves won after a long 26 years. Truist Park and the Battery will roar as fans gather to celebrate like it's 1995. Coming up next, a look into this weekend's local forecast with meteorologist Tim Miller up next. But first, take a look at a few of our top stories on our website.
Well, we're starting by talking about the parade tomorrow in Atlanta, about 10, noonish. All in all, it's going to be fabulous, 47 degrees. Now, it's going to be chilly, but all the people and all the excitement, it'll feel like 85 degrees. So if you go, it'll actually be great. And not a bad day, a little cooler than it should be even for Atlanta standards. Closer to home, notice Old Glory blowing here in the wind, so we have ourselves still a bit of a breeze, 49 degrees. Our current temperature winds northerly around 9 to 10 miles per hour. That makes it feel even cooler than 49 degrees. All right, we have a changing forecast headed our way, that's for sure. Low pressure is going to be developing off our coast and the Carolina coast. A better chance of rain, we're going to have to wait and see how this plays out, but certainly warmer next week. Once this low is finally out of here, things will be big improvements. High pressure over Columbus, Indiana, just south of Indianapolis tonight. Notice, we certainly have, we've had a north-northeast wind at the surface, a loft. We have winds from the southwest. So that's increasing the cloud cover. I think we'll finally ditch some of these clouds with a little bit of sunshine overnight, not overnight sunshine, but clearing skies overnight into sunshine in the morning. Let's get to tonight. There is 11 o'clock. And then notice this low that develops off the Florida coast. This is great for Florida because that'll give them some rain and would otherwise typically is dry time for them in November. But as this low travels across Florida and finally comes off the coast, the question is where will this low be? Now, if it looks as though it may be further towards us, if that's the case, we're going to get some rain Friday night, and it may last into Saturday now. There's the low off of basically Daytona Beach, and I'd say Cocoa Beach that will continue to move off near us and then up towards the Carolinas. So this is 5 o'clock Saturday night, giving us a decent chance of showers. Look at the line here. So I mean, look at the clearing skies. Atlanta's clear, we're cloudy with possible showers, and certainly some rain along the coast before all that exits. So let's get you the latest forecast. This is noon time tomorrow with our clouds. Notice they move south to north. But look at this big batch of rain that moves on in. This is 7 o'clock tomorrow night. So this totally changes the forecast if this plays out. And as it does so, that would give us a lot better chance, maybe 50, 60% chance of rain. This is now into Saturday, and that can indeed be some heavy downpours. Something we'll have to watch closely. I'm not buying into this quite yet. We'll be tweaking this forecast because where that low goes depends on how much rain we have. But look at that. This takes us now into Saturday night with rain at least till about midnight. Temperatures then will hold up a little warmer with the cloud cover and our showers. Notice this as well, will still be cool Friday and Saturday, but once that low's gone, the forecast gets back to the 70s and some really nice conditions. So tonight, certainly a little chilly. We'll do 34 now Saluda, 36 McCormick, generally 40 degrees from the city south. And there's our frost advisory for Saluda County in effect till 9 o'clock tomorrow morning. So sunshine mixed with clouds early, temperatures in the 50s, and then the possibility of rain that will come in. So the day timer looks like that. Again, with an overnight low tomorrow night, not nearly as chilly. So right now, 30% chance of showers Saturday, and we're going to probably tweak that forecast as we go along, especially as we head into tomorrow. And then Sunday, we'll turn the clocks back. Don't forget, standard time returns. We'll clear the skies and warm the temperatures up. At this time of year, we get all these chances of showers and then comes and goes with these lows, but we'll keep an eye on it.
Yeah, I'm hoping we'll get some warmer weather because today was a little too cold for my liking.
You and I both. Wait till next week.
Oh, yeah. Thanks so much, Tim. All right, and coming up next, after the FDA-approved vaccines for children ages 5 to 11, children in Hawaii have been eager to get their shot. Stay with us to find out more.
...
...